And the the major objective of these is to simplify them and to move out all kinds of material that like the application process, the standards for decommissioning, things that may change with the technology or with the times. And that are much more easily amended by regulation than by by law. And so they'll shorten these both up quite substantially. And I the version we've been circulating should have at the very end as appendixes, the material that's moving out and into regulations. And then the planning board will have to set those up as regulations before town meeting happens. Uh, in substance, uh, whatever changes we had to make in substance with regard to solar energy uses, that was done uh, back in this fall of last year when we amended Article four, which was is the article about uses. Uh, the Attorney General insisted that in that article, there be some references to solar energy usage. And the main thing we did was to make rooftop solar panels actually legal and stating it in so many words, even though they've been built beforehand. Uh, but for the two articles, for the two of them, other than, uh, so there's no real substantive change to the solar article or to the wind article. Really, it's just a lot of housekeeping to shorten it up, move, move material that might need to be amended more frequently over into regulations. So pretty self explanatory and pretty simple, I think.
Thank um. Does anyone on the select board have any questions? On either amendments to Article ten point one, when and energy or Article ten point two, solar energy?
Uh, not, not to these two. It, I, I think as Tom said, it, it cleans up a lot of the old language.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And brings it up, brings it up to date.
Yeah, and I have at one point during the process had met with a subcommittee of the alternative and alternative energy committee about this, and I'm going to meet with them again. Uh, so they're up to, up to speed on this. All right, the next one, I
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Tom, do you need us to vote on these?
Well, uh, the ones that we're going to discuss tonight, I need you to do whatever is the vote you need to do. I guess to put them on the warrant so that we can have the public hearing on the planning board in, in a couple of weeks. You can do it as we go along, you can do it that in
But why don't we do it as we go along if that, does that make sense?
Motion to refer to the planning board for them to conduct public hearings.
Okay, so then I'd ask your motion to refer our PB one and PB two to, uh, the planning board.
Okay. All right, so um, can I have a motion to refer to the planning board PB one amendments to Article ten point one, wind energy? And PB two amendments to Article ten point two, solar energy?
So moved.
While Mr. Grady moved it. Second.
Chris Plex second.
Go ahead, Chris. Chris got it. That's okay, no problem.
Okay, and because we're a hybrid, um, in person and, uh, Zoom, we're gonna have to do a roll call. Um, Mr. Farag.
Uh, I.
Mr. Plex.
Chris Plex, I.
Mr. Grady.
Paul Grady, I.
Ellen Mar, I.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, so PB, PB three is, uh, another one that's very much in the nature of housekeeping. This is the, um, our bylaw regarding the floodplain overlay district. It used to be Article, I think it was fourteen, or no, it was nine, Article, it was either nine or fourteen, now it's section nine point four. And the state has put out a new model bylaw for this and asks, is asking all communities to comply with that model bylaw. Uh, MAPC, uh, we received a grant for MAPC to help us with this, so they did the writing. And in actuality, you'll see changes highlighted in red. Uh, our current bylaw was actually pretty close to what the state was expecting now with its model bylaw. So it's really a relatively small number of housekeeping changes to get it in line perfectly with the state, uh, model bylaw. And that's all of this is doing substantively. Again, there's no changes that floodplain overlay districts still exist even after the change of the organization of the bylaws. So, uh, again, that, again, this is simple and self explanatory. I don't expect this to be controversial at all. But you can see the change, if you can see red highlights on your printed version. I don't know if you can or not, but it's a relatively small number of, of changes that are made.
Yeah, I, I can, I can see the, the strike throughs and the underlines, which is
Yeah, our, our, like I said, our current bylaw is surprisingly close to the, uh,
Yeah.
to the state model bylaw.
Yep, okay. Does anyone have any questions?
Ellen, just one. Tom, can you confirm there's no change to the geography of the district?
No, there isn't.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. So may I have a motion to refer to the planning board PB three amendments to Article nine point three floodplain and watershed production district?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Plex, second. Roll call, please. Mr. Farag.
Uh, David Farag, I.
Mr. Plex.
Chris Plex, I.
Mr. Grady.
Paul Grady, I.
Ellen Mar, I.
Okay, thank you for that. Um, if you don't mind for the next one, again, because I'm thinking of organizing these at for town meeting in, in order of very simple to the more controversial and debated ones later. So I would skip ahead here to PB ten. This was a last minute addition to our lineup. Um, apparently there was a note to our table of uses uh, that existed before about how you measure um, setbacks from a street. And that note was eliminated in error when uh, we reformed the Article four table of uses last fall. The zoning board asked this to be put back in. Um, so it's, it's just a provision that measures the setback along the, the roadways. Oh, and when, um, I think again, it's self explanatory and it's housekeeping to bring back something that inadvertently got deleted when we amended the article.
Okay, that, that was my question. So, um, okay.
Yeah, this is, I, I, I wish Woody was here because he could explain better why they think it's important to keep it. But I'll tell you that the planning board hasn't discussed it in humongous detail. It's doesn't seem to be anything that's problematic. It was an oversight and the zoning board's requesting it be put back. So it's being put back.
Okay, does anyone have any questions?
Tom, if you confirm that the new language matches the old language?
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, um, any other questions? Nope. Okay, so may I have a motion to refer to the planning board PB ten amendment to Article five point three table of dimensional regulations?
So moved.
Second. May I have a second? Mr. Plex, second. Uh, roll call, please.
Uh, David Frog, I.
Chris Plex, I.
Paul Grady, I.
Ellen Mar, I.
Okay, thank you. Um, the next one that I don't think could be controversial, but it may be is PB five because this is new material. Uh, this is, um, an effort to put in a development impact bylaw. Uh, so to, for large scale projects to be able to uh, mandate on paper that there can be mitigation, uh, ordered by either the planning board or the zoning board.
Um, uh, Tom, I'm sorry to interrupt. I don't see that we got PB five.
Yeah, I don't think we got that in our package.
It's not, it's not drafted yet, so.
Oh, it's in the version that I have, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Damn it. Oh, well, all right, we might have to put that off till next week then.
Yeah, that's fine.
But, but, but in a nutshell, you know, the most recent subdivision the planning board dealt with over on Black Horse Lane. You know, we're in a position of negotiating impacts to the subdivision. We weren't in any position to mandate anything. Um, the, the tempt of this bylaw is to give the planning board and the zoning board some authority to ask for things when certain thresholds of development are met. So I, I haven't read the new update from Carolyn, so actually it'd be better if we discuss this next week, but um, it's, it's going to be, it's going to only impact larger scale development subdivisions, you know, larger scale commercial development. The mixed use from the MBTA district, if we get any development under that, that, that's what it's designed to. It, it, based on the Hanover bylaw, Dedham has a bylaw, but again, in both of those cases, they deal with much larger projects. So there aren't too many examples in town, but we think it's important for the town to have this going forward. So we'll postpone the discussion of that one. Uh, the next one that I don't know that is controversial, but I'm hearing a rumor it might be, is PB six. Um, as you know, when we did the changes to Article four, uh, the table, the article dealing with uses last fall, we consolidated what had been the standalone Article fifteen about alternative dwelling, accessory dwelling units into Article four. And we also expanded the ability for an ADU to be built in a, a separate building from the main house. Now, the state has come along and now they are making uh, it a requirement, but new legislation to make ADUs of a certain, up to a certain size meant, uh, allowed as of right. So, um, we had to tweak what we just did last fall to conform with the new state law. And what Carolyn has drafted does that supposedly. We have to have all these things in place by February, and that's right between our two town meetings. So we figured we'd just get it done now. Um, and then can get into compliance with the state law as soon as we can. So this, this fully incorporates what the state's laws objectives are. ADUs up to nine hundred square feet, and that was the threshold of our old bylaw. Um, are allowed as of right. And that this incorporates that. We also put in a provision, though, and some of this came from members of the zoning board uh, to allow an ADU up to twelve hundred and fifty square feet. I believe it's in here somewhere. Um, by, by special permit. So there was, there was a sentiment that came from, again, uh, from members of the zoning board about allowing for a possibly larger ADU than our former bylaw and that the state law minimum is, which the nine hundred. So we said, we said we agree with that and Carolyn incorporated a, uh, twelve hundred and fifty square foot by special permit. So that, that's the not, again, it's easy to understand and explain that, uh, we, we need to comply with the new state law, even though we just changed our bylaw. And this is, this is doing it and giving a little more flexibility for the size of ADUs.
If I could just, so just to add, as I understand it, uh, Tom, the state is actually going, is going to adopt regulations in February, which, which are going to further detail the rules. So the only thing I'm going to raise is that you may have to go, it, it, it's all along to do this, but the state issues rules that are different than what's up, that, then you may have to go back to town meeting again in the spring and do it all over again. I'm just
It, it, I, yeah, I, I mean, I think two things about that. Number one, if, if, I'm assuming this is in DHCD's uh, ballpark, uh, purview that I doubt you're going to see regulations that fast. You never do. And I, you know, this, we're complying, we're complying with the text of the statute, which is going to control how regulations are written as, as well as what the bylaws need to say. So okay, excuse me, I'm sorry for getting over cold, but uh, I think we'll be okay with this. And again, if tweaks need to be made, we can make tweaks, but we just thought it was best to just get it done and get into compliance early. Um.
I just said two quick things on this is on the, on the legislation, I had heard about it, but I hadn't seen it. Is, is that, was that in the housing bond bill, the actual uh, language as far as that we're, we're sort of mirroring or, or where did it come from?
Um, I, it's, it was in some, I, I, I don't know, was in a housing bond bill?
Yeah.
We can get, you know, I can get, have Carolyn ask her to distribute the state legislation. Um, it was, I think it's part of, yeah, I think it was part of a larger package the legislature dealt with with regard to housing and, and developing affordable housing.
Well, as, well, as long as she had it and it is, is, uh, mirroring it, that, that's fine.
Oh, yeah, no.
The, the, the second thing I, I was going to say is, is I think for the board's consumption is, is that as, as we're moving forward with the Board of Health regarding regulations on rental units, we're going to have to see as the regulations come on this, how they're going to merge uh, with that, because somebody could make an ADU, uh, but then maybe they're renting it out. Uh, you know, for, for, for other purposes. So I think we're gonna have to figure how those will, 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 will merge down the pathway as time goes on, or how we're gonna uh, be able to codify, uh, that there are that. Cause again, same thing, fire department's gonna have to know if there's an ADU. Um, you know, pu- public safety, things of that nature. So that, that, but that's just something to think about down the line.
If you're thinking about a short term rental bylaw, for what it's worth, I drafted one because we talked about this on the bylaw working group about a year ago about whether to bring one forward. Um, I can offer that for thoughts and ideas, but it, it'll be very, very important that you clearly define and distinguish an ADU from a short term rental.
Yeah, and the thing is, is it, it, it is that it's great that people can get an ADU, age in place, do all those things. Um, but, but there's also the future of, you know, what, what, what are they doing with that unit as the years go on as well? So that's all.
Yeah, you know, but for, I was spent so much time this morning and coming home from Lowell in the car. WBUR announced they have some newsletter and this week, the topic of that newsletter is going to be uh, regulation of zoning, you know, the, about keeping it local or switching to the state taking more and more of a role. And this is obviously the state taking more of a role. So I don't know if anybody wants to go on a WBUR website and I, I'm presuming this newsletter will be available. I'm gonna see if I can read it because it's, it's, it's an interesting dynamic that the state is getting more and more involved in local zoning issues.
Well, if any of the select board does want to go in WBUR, make sure they let the, uh, the chairperson know a, as per our new, uh, uh, regulations. So as a, as a courtesy, yeah.
Okay, whatever. All right, so that one, uh, again, it's, I think it's pretty straightforward and, and I'm sure, you know, Carolyn did a good job in, 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 uh, mirroring the state law and what we needed to do.
Yeah, I, I, I would, you know, um, concur with, you know, Carolyn's, um, uh, update to this. It's, it's a lot of, a lot of changes and additions. You know, unlike the first two PBs that, that we looked at that were just, you know, housekeeping to, to, to meet up with the, the state regulations, there's a lot.
Yeah, but re- really the substance of it, the changes are really easy to understand is that now it's, now it's by right to us, you know, to the minimum size limit that we used to have. It's now by right.
Yeah.
And only a larger size is by special, where it was all special permit.
When, when we, when we had looked at it with the, with the zoning bylaw committee before, uh, we had take, we'd taken a very sort of tepid approach and using the ADUs, the zoning board wanted to go further. Um, and then we kind of, you know, did a step by step approach, but now that the state's opened the door, you know, it's just a matter of you gotta sort of take what they're doing and that's it at this point, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's going to be a significant change, uh, but you know, again, this the state is getting more involved in these issues to force, you know, development of affordable, you know, quote unquote, affordable housing. So we've got to get used to that new world.
Okay.
All right, so the next one then.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna, um, Mr. Plex, do you have any questions?
No questions, thank you.
No, okay. So may I have a motion to refer to the planning board PB six amendments to Article four point three accessory use regulations and Article two definitions?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
David Frog, I.
Chris Plex, I.
Paul Grady, I.
Ellen Mar, I.
Okay, thank you. Um, all right, now we start to get the ones that may be a little more meatier. Uh, the next one to talk about is PB four. And, you know, just to give a brief history of the land alteration bylaw, you know, back in the late sixties, like every other town, we used to have an earth, what was called an earth removal bylaw and it was its main target was to prevent lots becoming quarries and taking material, be it rocks, sand, soil, topsoil off a lot to be used or sold off site. Um, what, you know, beginning in the mid two thousands and then into the two thousand teens, we wanted to refine that. And, um, in particular, try to find a way to protect visible ledge from unnecessary destruction or removal, since that's a, you know, defining physical feature of Cohasset. So the land alteration bylaw had many forms from the mid two thousands until something passed in two thousand, I think, seventeen or eighteen town meeting and, and it replaced the earth removal bylaws, but we still have elements of the old earth removal bylaw in here. So anyway, the thought about this, um, you know, we have not seen a lot of projects where a special permit under this article has been necessary. And again, the target for the bylaw in terms of it had clearing limits. And this was so that, you know, you keep some natural vegetation and those clearing numbers, which are, let's see, clearing thresholds in section D here. Those are all the same as they've been under the bylaw since it's existed. But what we were been seeing is obviously some lots developed with a lot more blasting of ledge. And, uh, we, we have a poster child for this right now that's going on. I don't, I won't name the property. Um, you know, one of the things that uh, stimulated this bylaw was there were two things back in the mid two thousands. One, there was a roadway driveway blasted up the ledge on B Street. And another was a lot on Gannett Road, um, yeah, Gannett, Gammens Road, um, no, Nichols Road, that was totally clear cut. You know, and a hundred, hundred plus year old trees with, so one was a poster child for the need to protect ledge. One was a poster child to have some limits on how much of a lot you could clear. Um, so the, the lot of compromises were made to get something passed back in two thousand seventeen or eighteen and we when it comes to visible ledge, again, this only protects visible ledge, not subsurface ledge. Um, the exemptions were, we were exempted lots under eighteen thousand square feet. Those were small lots. We exempted what was necessary to excavate to build a house, the utilities and all of the accessory structures like driveways, detached garages, tennis courts, schools and what have you. The, the real essence, so some of this article is housekeeping is to make it read simpler and easier in a kind of a logical order. What's being regulated, clearing, grade changes, uh, removal of material? Uh, what are the exemptions? What are the limits that are going to trigger a special permit, et cetera? And the old bylaw, the current bylaw has a lot of references to assessor codes that are just too confusing to deal with. So part of the housekeeping is simplicity, but in the substance, what we are doing is really taking away some of the exemptions. So there will still be an exemption from this bylaw for the applicability of this bylaw to build the main house and utilities, but we're taking away the exemptions of the small lot, the under eighteen thousand square foot lot. And we're taking away the exemptions for the construction of accessory structures. And the theory behind that is that by regulating, at least through a special permit process, you will have some control of how much of a lot is getting blasted away. You know, the poster child lot of the moment would have a lot of blasting to build the house and to get utilities in there, but it might have a little less blasting and clearing if the, uh, construction of driveways and other accessory buildings were at least regulated, not to say they can't happen because a special permit could be granted, but uh, you know, at least going to be regulated and looked at and scrutinized a lot more. Um, and, and perhaps we will start to get more applications under this bylaw than we've had. Um, another thing, when, when one, one of these applications came to us for the Actors Row House on Howard Gleason's Road. And it was actually, I think at the suggestion of the developer or the homeowner, the new homeowner, they were taking away a patch of visible ledge to build a pool house in the back. And they suggested that there was another place on the property that the ledge subsurface was not too far below the surface and they could uncover some, create more visible ledge. And sort of ledge replication, we called it, which is similar to what happens under the wetlands bylaw that if you are going to fill a wetland, you're supposed to create new wetlands somewhere else. So we did that for that project and now we also want to incorporate that as as an option of something that the planning board could order be done. So where we might allow, you know, exposed ledge to be blasted away or have a building foot on it, we might also then be in a position to formally ask for some replication if ledge elsewhere could be exposed, um, rather easily. We, that's adopting a policy thing that we adopted for one project. So, um, that's, that's really, you know, again, lots of changes in the text because we're trying to you know, simplify it and make it go in more logical order than it had before, or take away all the accessor map references or accessory code references and, uh, cut down on the number of, uh, the exemptions for, for ledge removal and earth removal. The exemptions that you see under clearing exemptions haven't changed. So those exemptions are still there for lot clearing. The lot clearing thresholds have not changed. But it's the exemptions that we currently have for ledge and earth removal that we are changing. And changing, again, the change is that you'll have to go through a special permit to justify it rather than just be able to blast away at everything that's on the lot.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Plex.
So, Tom, without getting too into the language, from your perspective, does this put the planning board in a position to be able to, um, make judgment calls? Or would a builder be able to come in and say, there's a corner over there where I'm creating ledge, so you have to grant me this permit? Because I'm taking out ledge over here. Is there discretion?
Yeah, well, yeah, there's always discretion and a special permit. And then the, the end of the day, the standard is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. So, you know, in, in the case of the Howard Gleason Road thing, the, the piece of ledge that was being covered by a pool house was obviously in the back, but I believe you could see it from the street around, looking around one side of the house. So they, they made, uh, another area that was going to be exposed visible from the street as well. So that was fine, but if you're going to cover something up and then re- reveal ledge in a place where it's not really visible uh, to the public, which is again, that the characteristic we're trying to protect. You know, we could turn that down and it says may order replication, I believe it says somewhere in here. I don't think it says shall order uh, replication of, of ledge.
Yeah, it's that may versus shall language that, uh, I think makes this work. So I'm supporting.
You know, it's the usual special permit standard, so it's going to always be case by case. And, you know, I, I will tell you that maybe it can before town meeting, maybe it'll be a good idea, but you know, the poster lot in question comparing if this bylaw was in effect. I think what might have happened, uh, what hopefully would have been happened, that some of that blasting and clearing that's gone on up there would have had to go through a special permit process where it hasn't. You know, the planning board only saw that property for a large home review, which is didn't, wasn't going to stop any blasting. So that's, that's the hope is just to put some more scrutiny on some of the things because a lot of the lots now being developed and uh, there's another member of my board can give you examples up in North Cohasset along Howard Road. Things that have been blasted, the smithereens up there. Uh, you know, we're going to marginal lots now that weren't developed for a long time for a reason. So we're getting a lot more involvement of ledge. So we wanted to tighten this up a little bit to give some protection.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that planning board discretion is in there. I don't want us to be in a situation where somebody comes to the planning board and says, you have to approve this because my interpretation of this bylaw says I can do this and now you have to approve it. So I'm good.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Farag?
Thanks, I got a couple of quick ones. I take it it, it covers chipping as well? So it's chipping or blasting? Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, and then secondarily was, uh, on the garage, even though it's, it's an accessory. Um, what was the thought process behind taking away the exemption for a garage? Cause I mean, if you're going to build a house, you're generally going to have obviously the utilities, but a garage would be sort of the normal thing. I could see a pool or these other, uh, accessory accoutrements, you know, being outside of it, but, but the garage would go ba- basic to a house usually.
Yeah, but again, this is only applying to detached ones. So what it might do is
Okay.
encourage the garage to be made part of the main house.
Okay.
And, you know, I know, I know some properties in town where, you know, they'll have a three or four car garage that's main house and they'll have a excess garage for three more, you know, like it becomes a six car site and you know.
No, absolutely. As long as it's encouraging, uh, the, the garage to be attached to the house, that, that certainly, uh, go, goes within the, 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 um, the thought process of it. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Grady?
No.
Okay, um, all right, may I have, um, is that it, Tom?
That's it.
On this one? Okay, may I have a motion to refer to the planning board PB four amendments to Article nine point one land alteration?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Uh, David Frog, I.
Chris Plex, I.
Paul Grady, I.
Ellen Mar, I. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, all right. I'm just looking at what's left. I want to make sure we cover everything.
PB seven.
Yeah, okay. So, uh, PB seven is. The proposed change to. Um, measuring houses by floor area ratio rather than our current lot coverage. Um, today we, we follow. Traditional common zoning. Um, to measure. The size of a house in two dimensions, real, just the footprint that it places on the ground. Um, floor area ratio is relatively newer concept. It's applied now. Very frequently in other communities and even in our own. In commercial projects, we use it for. The village mixed use area, we use it for the new MBTA district as well. Um, I believe there are a couple of communities like. It, uh, I believe Brookline and Newton use floor area ratio. They're much denser than we are, obviously, but, uh. Uh, you know, admittedly, floor area ratio applied to residences is a new, relatively new concept, but. What it is going to do is. Instead of just a two dimensional. Look at the house, it's a three dimensional look. It's going to measure the bulk of the properties, the bulk of the structure and. It is designed to be, it's, you know, also known as proportional zoning is to make the lot. The, the structure in some proportion. To the lot size, uh, of, of the property in question. Now, the numbers we picked, so. Right now we have, if you look at the chart. And the table of dimensional regulations, that's part of this, uh. Uh, article. We now have a number for maximum coverage of all impervious material. Which is at thirty percent of the lot. And then we have right now a maximum coverage of the main structure of the house, which is at twenty percent. Uh, we're keeping the thirty percent measurement and that's basically to deal with. All of the accessory structures that may be impervious that you'll have. Um. With the numbers, we replaced the lot coverage of twenty percent to this floor area ratio. Now, these percentages that I have come up with. Are based on data that the. Cretessor bylaw working group had developed. I believe it is based on data all through twenty twenty one, at least, if not later. And it is derived at by looking at the average house size. In each of our districts as measured against their minimum lots of. And, um. The average lot size, just the way everybody knows in the town has increased. You can see data that in that. Since the year two thousand, not only has our population increased by a significant percentage, but so has. So has lot size, uh, house size. So you see that RA would be point one seven. And RB point one two and RC is point oh nine. Um. These, again, based on averages. These will ensure some kind of, and so basically we're. Making this FAR conform to what our development has been to date. And there are very few houses. In any of our districts that exceed twenty percent. Lot print, you know, footprint coverage. There are some. Some of them are on the smaller districts, RA and RB. Um, we are seeing an increasing trend on the planning board with our large home reviews, very large houses. Uh, the one that's being built. Uh, off little, uh, North Main Street in Little Harbor, right on Little Harbor is over ten thousand square feet, but they happen to have a very, very big lot. And I believe when I calculated the FAR. For that, and I'm going to have to redo it for town meeting. That house might be slightly smaller. In this, but it would still be significantly a, a, a large house. The house on Cunningham Bridge is nine thousand square feet. Right now, uh, I'd have to check what the number is, how FAR would apply to that. That would be in Residence C, I believe that district is in. It might be slightly smaller, but if you have the lot size. You will be able to still have a very large house, but. We are seeing also with the large home reviews, especially since I've been on the planning board these last four and a half years, uh. You know, a lot of neighbors coming out and. Not being happy with the scale of new houses being built relative to the scale of the rest of the neighborhood. So. The twenty percent lot coverage can be very, very generous. And as we see the trend toward larger and larger homes and pushing the limits on height. Pushing the limits on setbacks. It's only a matter of time. That we're going to push the limits on, uh, lot coverage as well. And I'll, I'll give the example, there's a new lot, it's been developed across the street from Deer Hill School. There was, there's a white. Stucco, uh, wall, concrete wall there. A permit was granted to, uh, subdivide it. So there'd be a new house that's in the back. That back lot is fifty five thousand square feet plus. It's, so it's larger than the residence B minimum by a lot. Um, twenty percent lot coverage is an eleven thousand. Square foot plus footprint for that house. So it could have been substantially larger. Twenty percent then, then when you put on a second floor or maybe a third floor, you're looking at, you know, upwards of a thirty thousand square foot house could be built on that lot. Assuming you meet setbacks and everything else. What is actually going to happen on that how lot is a fifty five or fifty seven hundred square foot house. Uh, it has an FAR of point one one. Where the RB limit would be point one two. So that new house would comply with this bylaw. And it's still at fifty five, fifty seven hundred square feet is a very large house and. More than adequate for a family. So. Again, you have the lot size, you'll get a big house, but we want to try to put things in proportion. In scale to the neighborhood and scale to the size of your lot. And this, this will do that now. I will tell you last week discussing this with the planning board and I'm going to bring this up again tonight. I'm amenable to tweaking some of these numbers, but you know. Uh, the, again, these numbers are solid because they're based on the averages of development to date. So, uh. The, the, the concept is there, the number can be debated. And I'll be very honest, the alternative to this is. Our current, you want to stay with two dimensional zoning, then. You change the lot coverage from twenty percent, which is potentially catastrophic in some situations, depending on the lot size, but. Switch it down to fifteen percent or twelve percent, something like that. That would be the alternative to this and twenty percent is very generous. It's not an uncommon number in other towns, but it's very, very generous. And we are getting to a point in time where a trend is definitely going to larger and larger houses and pushing. That twenty percent limit. And I don't think that's what this community wants based on the. Feedback we get during large home reviews. So that, that's all I'll say about it. It's all pretty straightforward, you know, in the language that has. We did, uh, well, I'll just mention this, we did put in this note to the regulations that we would allow. For exceeding this limit by ten percent by a special permit process. Normally any dimensional limitation in the bylaw to exceed it, you need a variance. They're not going to get a variance from our zoning board. So. We did for some flexibility, allow. A ten percent overage by a special permit process. That's, that's it. I have nothing more to add to that.
Good day.
Chris, uh, Plax.
Mr. Plax.
Uh, two things. The first one, a quick one, Tom, I assume this is inclusive of accessory dwelling units?
Uh. Yeah.
Okay. Uh, and then my, my second question I think is more for Chris senior or maybe Ellen. Uh, I, I'm personally supportive of moving to the three dimensional regulation, but I think the really thorny bit is going to be the numbers. So if we vote to refer this to the planning board, will we be able to come back to the numbers later?
Well, I would suggest that you could do that at the. Public hearing that the planning board has. Because the planning board will be taking a vote to recommend or not recommend and. And, and by the way, I said this to the planning board, I fully expect that it's very possible that I'm going to get up there as the chair of the planning board. Say the planning board's promoting this article, but then also have to say. That the planning board is recommending against it because I'm not so sure the planning board is fully behind this one yet. But yes, the, the, I'm, I'm open to the idea of tweaking the numbers, but I just. You know, again, we don't want to tweak them so much that we're back to the. You know, approaching a twenty percent lot coverage that we're trying to get away from.
Uh, I just want to make sure if we vote to refer it to the planning board tonight, then the ship has sailed and we don't get another look at the numbers because I. I think to get comfortable with the numbers, we'd have to see some examples.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I, I've got, like, I gave you the example of the Soria Street one. That's a perfect.
I know, but.
Because it's, it's. Brand new construction and a new lot, I could, I think. Uh, you know, we had. Uh, two, two good sized houses put on the end of Windy Hill Lane. Those were grandfathered lots, so they're undersized. And, you know, then we have this project, the house that's being built on Little Harbor. We have the house being built on the Cunningham Road. I'm, I was going to get, get all the data for that. To make sure we have a, a sense of this, um. Um, and, and. You know, with some of the newer construction in town.
Okay, Mr. Frog.
Uh, quickly, cause I know we have a hard stop here at seven, um, and one more article to go. Uh, with, with this one, I know it was controversial the last time and it got bumped to the, the, the special, um, and. And it doesn't seem there's congruence on the planning board, but I think. To at least refer or move it forward and then have it in the public hearing and, and go from there with the planning board. Cause. The problem is, is I, I agree with, 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 uh, Chris Plex that. That, you know, it would be great to have some examples, but the problem is, is in this process, they didn't have a consultant that could give the, the pictures. You know, which you, you would normally want. So you have it in data vis a vis, here's this, you know, uh, property over here or over there. Um, you know, you have it there, but you don't, you don't have sort of the, the three dimensional things, which, which, what, when they did the village bylaw way back when. Years ago, you know, there, there, there was nice, uh, pictures of what it would look like when, if instituted. So unfortunately, that's not the case with this and we're going to have to.
Yeah.
We, we're, we're going to have to with our own minds, be able to apply the numbers vis a vis whatever it is. So. I, I just, yeah, I'll leave it there.
Yeah, I don't know that there's a picture we could do. And by the way, I've said this to the planning board too, is that. You know, this is, this, this article rises and falls and the, all of them rise and fall on their own merits, you know, and if, the, the, the whole. Structure of the redone bylaw doesn't collapse if we don't pass this. It's an idea. I've asked everybody to let it go to the town and it'll either pass or it won't pass. Um, I realize it's, it's a big change, but. Again, you gotta be, we, we're trying to think ahead of coming down a hike.
Okay, um, so I ha- I have a couple of, of questions and I'm going to be consistent, Tom, when we talked about this. Last spring is we did enact a, a height restriction to thirty five feet. So doesn't that add a third dimension? To the current two dimensional.
No, no, we've always had the, we've always had the measure of height of thirty five feet. We just, what we changed was where's the point? Where you measure the thirty five feet? Just, we just changed it from the middle of a sloped roof to the top of a sloped roof.
Okay, so.
That's why we've been there.
Okay, so it, so it's been there. So if it's been there. I, I, I'm not quite sure why we need this and I'll give an example, a half acre is a little shy of twenty two thousand square feet, right?
Yeah.
Right? And so if you have a twenty two hundred square foot house. Say it's one level.
Yeah.
And you wanted to add a full second story to it.
Yeah.
Which would get it to forty four hundred square feet. It's beyond in district RA, wherever that is. It's, it's beyond because you can only go to thirty seven hundred square feet. If you apply the seventeen percent. Okay, am I, am I doing it correctly?
Yeah, you just measured the lot size by that percentage and that's the volume of the house you can get. And. You know, in the explanation to this bylaw, I'm using that. Soria Street example, um, you know, the, the, just quickly about the height, you know, you could stack on floors. If you have a big, if you can have a giant footprint of eleven thousand square foot, like on that fifty five thousand square foot lot. You stack two and a half floors on that to meet the height requirement, you're still got a huge house. You have a twenty something thousand square foot house. Uh, and, and the thing about what your example in Residence A is, well. All right, twenty two thousand is at least conforming as the lot size, but again, it, it's, it's. It should be in scale with the lot size. Some lots are just not going to support a much larger structure. And that's what we hear from neighbors. We heard particularly that windy hill and I'll have exam, I'll have the numbers for the. And by the way, David, all the developers now or engineers are giving us FAR, even though we don't ask for it. They're giving it all on that plan. So there's a lot of more recent filings that we can find the FAR. In a heartbeat because they've given it to us. But, um. You know, it, yeah, it's going to be some value judgments to be made about whether you want to see. You know, all of a sudden, a, a much larger, more than twice as the size bulky house than you had before. That's all. And thirty seven hundred square feet, I. You know, that's still a good sized house.
Right, but that, but it's not, I, ho- honestly, I don't feel like it's our place to judge. What size home a family can or should have.
Well, that's what zoning is all about. Zoning is put limits. It's not, I know there was a sentiment mentioned at one town meeting. From somebody and I expect to hear it again, that people have the right to do whatever they want. They don't, they never have. That's what zoning is. Zoning is the community saying. We want to put these certain limitations. We want setbacks. We don't want zero lot, zero setback lot lines. You know, we want a height limit. We don't want five stories. This, this is just another value judgment and you either. Want to incorporate and. You know, per, you know, well, incorporate our current development patterns to date, or you want to let it be a Wild West show. And twenty percent coverage on that twenty two thousand square foot lot, assuming you meet setbacks and sewage disposal and all that other stuff. What's twenty percent of that? That's. Five thousand square feet? That's a five thousand square foot foot, footprint house. And Tom. Apply that by two and a half or three stories and you have a house that would be. Horribly out of scale. And that's the one, that's the thing we're cautioning against. All right.
Yeah, Mr. Grady.
Tom, so repeat for the general audience too, that. You can apply for a special permit. If you, if need be. So in Ellen's example, the extra five thousand square feet, you could apply for a spare of special permit.
Yeah.
And be the required.
Up to ten.
Up to ten percent.
Ten percent. So. Yeah, you, the, 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 the numbers here are your as of right. You have ten plus ten percent is special permit. Anything over that is a variance.
Yeah, okay.
And that's the same today with our twenty percent footprint. You know, anything that was proposed over that twenty percent footprint would need a variance. And again, this, this isn't a problem yet. We, again, there's very few lots that exceed twenty percent footprint, but. It's coming. I, the trends are there that it's coming.
Yep.
Okay, well, um, I, I concur with Mr. Plax. I, I would like to have an opportunity to. Um. You know, maybe look at different numerical scenarios from the, um, percentages by district. Um. Because if we refer this to the planning board as is.
They can amend it during the public hearing.
Yeah.
They can, they can amend it.
We can amend it.
Comes back to you, what comes back to you can't amend. You can vote to support or not support.
Could be amended at the floor of town meeting, but I. I, just so, just so you know, uh, uh. You know, the other thing too, if you run into a lot that's undersized in a district, a lot, uh, you know, a residence A lot that's only fifteen thousand square feet, that's also nonconforming. So that goes through a zoning board process separate from this too. So. You know, it's not like everybody has the, the right to just do whatever they want on a lot. Uh, uh, under current law. This is just adding a different. Layer of. Uh, uh, regulation or complexity to it. But if you want to run some numbers yourself, the minimum lot size of A is eighteen thousand, I believe B is thirty five thousand and C is. The U is, I said sixty, B is sixty. Um. You know, anything under those numbers in those districts is already a nonconforming lot. And if it's a virgin lot that hasn't been built on. You would need a variance to even build on it. So any size house, so you know. That's something to think about, you know.
I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Grady.
So Tom, for instance, I'm in Needham quite a bit. There were a lot of, uh. Little ranch houses when I was a kid. Now, these homes take up almost all of the existing lot.
Yep.
That they're tearing down, you know, the ranch style homes post war and. It's just, I've seen neighborhoods just change. It's incredible. So. Could we get a page anyway and, you know, in any way from their book as to what they're doing? Because again, now the neighbors are pushing back, um. Because they've been allowed to overbuild and like I said, you walk out your front door, you're practically on the street in a lot of homes that were, that did have front yards. Five, ten, fifteen years ago.
Yep. No, and, and the, that was, you know, that was called mansionization twenty years ago, in the early two thousand, mid two thousands. And that's when we brought on large home review at the recommendation of our planning, of our. Master plan consultant at the time, Judy Barrett. And originally we wanted that process. And originally, we wanted that process to be a special permit process and it became the weak thing it is, but there was a classic example in Newton, uh, Net Norwell next door, where there was a little ranch house and they were building the new one behind it. They were still living in the ranch while the new one was getting built and it was, I don't know, ten times the size of the ranch. Um, that's the kind of mangerization that started this kind of movement towards FAR and towards things of large home review. You probably will hear from one of our planning board members about Brookline and Newton, because I do think they're the two towns that have residential FAR. Um, and their numbers are like point three, point four, but they're a much denser community than we are. They have zero lot lines and things of that. So point three and point four is where if we took our twenty percent footprint and translated that to FAR, we'd be at a point three or point four. And that's exactly what we're trying to get away from. Our, our development pattern has been to stay under that twenty percent, stay a lot under that twenty percent for the most part. And that's what this is trying to incorporate, just to incorporate what we've done to date and not let things get way out of hand. So.
Okay, so Chris Senior, could you just say again what the path is?
So what happens is if you choose to tonight, you'd refer it to the planning board.
Yeah.
There'll be a public hearing. Which members can go to.
Yeah, yeah.
And um, then the planning board hears comments and they can amend based on the comments. And then they, if they decide to move forward, they send it back to you folks for uh
The, the way, the way it is.
The, the way they adopt it. So they have to make changes, whatever it may be. They may, they may amend it during the public hearing, which they can do.
Yeah.
And then they'll come back to you. But if it once it comes back to the select board, you can either at that point, you reckon, you can, you can vote not to put on the warrant. You can do that, but you can also vote to recommend or not recommend, then and it's, you, but you can't amend.
You can't be amended.
You, on ten eighty four, you can't. The select board can't pre, pre-warrant amend it.
Okay.
Once it's gone through the public hearing.
So, um.
So we still have another bite at the apple.
Yeah, so Mr. Plax, does that process?
So we have a bite at the apple, but it's, it's a yay or nay. It's not a, I think the number should be point two five instead of point two.
Correct.
I don't, I, I would disagree. I would disagree that I would have the flexibility to change this number.
So what what I'm worried about, Tom, is and and I haven't gone through this process recently, but when this was last flying around, I looked at a couple of houses in my neighborhood and was surprised to see that a lot of houses that, to me, are consistent with the neighborhood reason reasonably sized uh, wouldn't qualify under what had been proposed a year ago. So and and I know I'm, I'm giving examples without giving specifics, but that's where I'd really be more comfortable if we had specifics where we could say here's what uh, wouldn't qualify under these guidelines. Here's what would qualify under these guidelines. So unfortunately, without that, I think I'm a no on referring it back to the planning board.
Well, I'll ha- I I, I mean, I, I can't, I can't give every lot in town as an example and I can't
Oh, right.
Can't give you a general answer. I mean, if this will create a new threshold that could turn a lot that is conforming into nonconforming, yes, that may happen. And that may mean that, and that may mean that you have to go through hoops to get an addition put on. But, you know, we're taught, you know, all, all, all houses that now exist, if they exist now exceeding these FAR numbers of grandfather, they don't have to worry about. It turned that town down and they can be occupied for all eternity. It's the expansion thing, and that's when you get into the question of, are you building something that's out of scale when you start the expansion process?
Totally understand the concept, but the numbers are where we can judge whether what's being advanced is appropriate or not. And that's where
I know, well, I'm, I'm telling you that they're based on the averages of of some data that the previous but working
Okay, but if if they're based on averages though, and my statistics are rusty here, if the average is the limit, then the only thing that would be allowed to be built is smaller than the current neighborhood norm.
Fine, okay. I, and I understand that. And that's why I, I said to the planning board on Wednesday night, I've said it repeatedly. I'm open to suggestions, but I will tell you that, you know, my request for comments and feedback from the planning board, one member doesn't come, doesn't stick around for the discussion of zoning. And the others don't offer anything. I, I'm not making that as a criticism. It's just a fact that I'm gonna have a public forum next Monday. And I'm hoping the public will give some feedback, because that'll certainly push us in a direction one way or the other. And, and uh you know, I'm, again, I'm open to an idea for something else. I'm open to the idea of sticking with two dimensional, just reduce the twenty percent footprint to something more reasonable, which would be, you know, twelve to fifteen percent. I, you know, I, I think the three dimensional is the way to go, but, you know, I'll even do, do stick with two dimensional as long as we don't have this outrageous twenty percent number, because with the first person who actually pushes to twenty percent, you'll all be appalled what gets built. Um, so anyway, I hear what you're saying, but let's, you know, again, we tried, we tried to get input on this as much as possible. Trying to get as much between now and next, you know, our public hearing, but we, I, I think we have the flexibility to change this or not even bring it forward at this point.
All right, um, so we're, we're getting close.
I, I had, I had one, I had one hand up and and this will be quick, because I know we're getting to the end. Uh, uh, on this particular one, I just say we refer it because we asked the planning board to review and look at that as the the bylaw committee. And so to just refer to them to see what they can come up with. And then after that, we, we can, we can still recommend or not recommend what they come up with and or go to that public hearing and put our thoughts in, in helping them to recommend something. Um, so we, so for those reasons, I, I, I would say refer and then we can go after that.
Okay.
Um, but, but I do hear, I do hear Mr. Plex's uh issue with it. I do hear that, yeah.
Yeah, I do too.
Okay.
So if um, to get into the philosophy between Article eight, I would guess if we're doing five on another night, let's do eight on another night.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't get eight.
Yeah, eight and eight and nine kind of go hand in hand, but uh
Yeah, we didn't get copies. We didn't get copies of them, so um.
We gotta make a motion on this one?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, um, all right. Can I have a motion to refer to the planning board PB seven amendments to Article five point three implementation of floor area ratio in the residential districts?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor? Roll call, please?
David Frog, I.
Paul Grady, I.
Mr. Plax?
Chris Plex, nay.
Ellen Mar, I. Okay.
All right, um.
All right.
So this, just on, just on scheduling real quick, so.
You gotta go.
Yeah, we, we've, we've got other people, we've got another meeting, Tom, so we've got to wrap this up.
Okay, no, just quickly, just, we're starting our public hearings on the ninth, so I have to have all votes to referral by then. Um, I am meeting with the zoning board on Tuesday, the first, I guess it is.
Okay.
If we, if we're gonna meet with you on the first as well, I just wanna, hopefully, we can coordinate times or I can do both.
Um, yes, we meet on the first, so you, you tell me what time, we can put you out there.
Yeah, I'll, I'll have to check what I'm on the zoning board's agenda for.
Okay. Just let us know, because our agenda goes up on two, on Friday.
Okay.
Okay. Can I have a Thank you, Tom. Sorry to rush you at here at the end.
No, thank you all. Appreciate your time.
Okay, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor? Roll call, please?
I. David Frog, I.
Sorry, Chris Plex, I.
Don't worry.
Paul Grady.
Ellen Mar, I. Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, bye bye.
Okay, now meeting two.